I'm calling the Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. First thing is to acknowledge AB 361, and so we will be remaining in hybrid. And now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we have some reports. The first one is the Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report. Come on down.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to do this. My name's Tim Shaley. I've been a member of the Parcel Tax and Bond Committee, Citizens Oversight Committee, for several years now. And we have the report which were required to send to you for Measures E and C. And I guess I'm here to tell you that we believe that the funds have been properly allocated as required by law. They were used for the reasons in which both the bond and the parcel tax were passed. And so at this point, I would report that if you don't have the report, we have it for you. And that we've met the requirements. Are there questions?
I would also like to point out, and thank you, Tim, for being here. After most of the committee left after the last meeting last week, Alice, who's been the longest member of the committee, was reminding us that when she was one of the original parents who helped get the first parcel tax passed back in, I think, '02, because her, I think, daughter was in a car carrier at the time, and I think they're off in college. So we were doing the math. And when you look at this Oversight Committee report, it starts in 2011-12, and we were kind of like, why is that? And it's because originally, most of the reports were done orally. And so the reason they go back to 11-12 is that's as far back as I could go when I got here. Munis only, we had munis, and escape only goes back to 11-12, so I could only drill down into the 11-12. And so we codified these annual reports into a written format, which is what you see here, so that we could actually, in perpetuity, have something that actually put it.
Actually have a report?
They did. They gave oral reports to the board each year, but they weren't codified. We created these when I got here, just for you all to know, because it is, it actually creates in perpetuity something that we can point to for posterity reasons. And just to make sure that we know, what have we done? How much have we collected and how do we spend? So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to Tim and the committee for being so dedicated, being on this committee, meeting with us, reviewing. It's not necessarily a very stimulating committee to come out and take a look.
A lot of accounting of which things go, particularly for the parcel tax, go against which things that they've been approved for. And of course, the parcel tax raise is about $2 million, I think, which is not enough to cover all the areas that we'd like. So they're supplemented in some cases, and we know that. And that hasn't raised or changed that much, even with some new development occurring and new parcels. Sort of seems to be offset by maybe some attrition in some way. So, but it's in perpetuity, so we don't have to worry about that. And then, as you've probably informed, as far as the bonds go, why those have all been those all been collected from the public, and so those bond measures have been tapped, I guess I would say, at this point.
They're sold.
Ah, well, okay.
Thanks for, thank you for spending your time, giving your time to overlook this. I was just doing some kind of back the envelope calculation. At the elementary parcel tax was 700-something in the year it was passed, and it was 775 projected for next year. And I was just doing some calculations, what was the buying power of 725, whatever it was? In 2011, now, it's nearly a million dollars. And so we've lost essentially $250,000 of buying power
Wow.
between the first year of the parcel tax and next year.
Yeah, we didn't index it, as you're indicating would be really nice to do.
Since 2011, since it was recorded, but it passed in 2005.
Oh, right, right.
Almost 20.
And that was just the elementary. There's bigger losses, of course, at the secondary.
Well, and when you look how flat it really has remained, again, because we don't have an inflator built in. And again, I want to make sure that the community knows how grateful we are for the generosity of our community that they have passed those measures. Because when you do look at how much our community has supported us over the years, and you look at close to $2 million per year over 20 years, that also adds up to a lot of money that our community has put into investing in education. But your point, children's not lost on us. I mean, at the secondary level, in 11-12, we collected just under 1.15, or 1,150,000. We're collecting just under 1.12 million now. And so, you know, that's not a very big increase in close to 20 years. And so, and with inflation now at 8%, we're really feeling the squeeze. And so that is indicative of the challenge that we're facing.
Want to say thank you, too.
Thank you.
Because I know how hard it is to get volunteers from the community, and you've been doing it for a while, and I really appreciate you doing it.
I'm happy to serve, and I'm in a category where I won't age out probably for a few more years. So I don't have any kids in the school. I'm the senior representative.
Well, we appreciate that.
Call me anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be careful what you ask for.
And our next report comes from the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee, and that is Jerry.
And Jerry can't be here tonight, so I'll present with Tim.
Okay, so, Tim, you're up again. Thank you very much for filling in.
So as I was trying to indicate before, I didn't separate my comments, but we do oversee how the bonds are being spent. And at this point, we have, in the summary that was sent to you, a list of all the projects that have been completed recently, some that are ongoing, like the replacement of HVAC over at Casa, which I see going past there. And then, yes.
Ellen and Matt, can you guys turn your mics on? People can't hear. I know, I'm taking about in Zoom.
And then, beyond that, there are a number of projects that are getting ready to be started. As indicated, though, we've raised all the funds through bond, letting those bonds, and so that'll be the next thing, as you indicate on your list of things to do.
I did want to add that we did revise it slightly to add, as I pondered some of the projects, because one of the things I did is I tried to really put some thought to the future projects so that we were able to, for my replacement and for the board and the community, make sure that someone had a roadmap for what needed to be done. And I just want to highlight it because there are some critical projects that I know are important to both the junior highs and the high schools in particular, the elementary certainly. I just want to highlight some of those in here, if you don't mind, Tim.
Sure.
These are the future projects. Pangrove restroom renovation. There are a Kinder Wing, a Kinder Classroom in particular, where two small formerly, in the Kinder Building, in the Kinder Classroom, two small restrooms, not AD accessible, that they filled in the sewer lines with concrete, I'm sure, because the sewer lines were broken. Those need to be restored. Kitchen improvements at Cherry Valley, Casa Grande High School. They need more classroom wings, whether they're in our ring or somewhere else. We don't have any specific classrooms that are designed around the needs or our most vulnerable student population, our special needs population. We don't have classrooms where we have restrooms designed inside the classrooms. And that should be a priority for our district, frankly. And we have that at both Peddle Mountain and Casa Grande in particular. McDowell, McKinley, McNair, multipurpose need to be redone, just like we've done Valley Vista. They need new pocket tables, new floors, new interior paint, and new AD accessible restrooms. The South County building modular at McKinley needs to be replaced. It's on here as that list. We have that design already finished. Hopefully, that's a 2024 project. Interior renovations and existing bleacher replacement at Casa Grande. The gymnasium needs to be redone at Casa Grande. It was already redone at Peddle Mountain High School. That interior gymnasium needs to be redone. The bleachers need to be replaced. We've been looking at the floor, but until you do the bleachers, it doesn't make sense to do the floor. They should be done in conjunction. Flooring replacement at Kenworth Junior High School needs to be redone in the multi, multipurpose interior improvements at Peddle Mountain High School. And that really needs to be redone. The stage needs to be redone. Really, it should be redone in conjunction with a small gymnasium, like a practice gym, because I'm sorry, but wrestling mats and cafeteria just don't go hand in hand. I could say that at Casa, too. I added here, and I'm going to just give a shout out to the neighbors. Well, I added new specialized classrooms at Peddle Mountain High School as well. Same thing. We need specialized classrooms that are designed with the unique needs of special education students in mind, and in particular, toilet-inning facilities built into the classroom so that students don't have to grow across the hall or down the way in order to have restroom access. Renovating the main quad area at Peddle Mountain High School, we had to take out that large redwood tree. And there is a classroom portable adjacent to the pool that is not AD accessible. You have to step over a threshold to get into that classroom portable. It's almost like designed around like a ship. You know what I mean? You have to walk over the threshold. That's okay when it's flooding from, you're trying to keep water out from the ocean, not okay in a classroom. And we need to renovate the main quad area where we took that tree out, the big, large redwood tree that died. And I'm going to give a shout out to the Peddle Mountain Neighborhood Association, because we've kind of committed to trying to get red trees into the main entryway for Peddle Mountain High School. It's kind of attached to redoing the quad area, so I want to get this kind of documented in this.
Did you say redwood?
No, that was a slip of the tongue.
Okay.
Trees. Trees, appropriate trees.
Yes, appropriate trees.
Cafeteria improvements at Peddle Mountain Junior High and Casa MoU. Casa Cafeteria, OMU, sorry, OMU.
And for those, it's not just rede, but really capacity, building up capacity, right?
Well, I don't know if it's capacity. I mean, I think creating the Casa outdoor plaza added capacity for students.
I'm talking about the cafeteria, sorry.
Well, the cafeteria, creating outdoor spaces where kids can hang out, I think it's really wrestling mats. It's like, who wants to eat in a cafeteria with wrestling mats? You and you. I think it's really creating outdoor spaces where kids want to hang out. We did that with the outdoor plaza. I think we need to do more of that. Because kids, it's a different culture than when I was there. Kids don't want, by kids, I mean students, don't want to hang out necessarily in a cafeteria environment. I think if we want students to eat, well, or at least create, get rid of pocket tables at a high school. I mean, I'm sorry, pocket tables are so elementary. They should be more cafe-style tables. We should have a master plan in place where we can design a cafeteria around the more 21st century needs of high school students. That's what we should be doing, where students have a place where they want to come and hang out with better lighting. By lighting, I mean natural lighting. You know, we barely need windows or lighting in here if we had the blinds open, where we could actually hang out in a more natural lighting environment. And again, getting wrestling mats out of a cafeteria, nobody wants to eat around wrestling mats, even if they're rolled up. Did I say that often enough? Grandstand and press box replacement at both high schools. I mean, that's just super essential. Both high schools, those press boxes are, in particular at Casa, are dangerous. I mean, we did what we could to shore them up. We don't allow students in it. That should be a priority with our bond funds, to look at replacing those. Multipurpose interior renovations for our elementary, the ones that are left into the multipurpose, ongoing HVAC replacement at various sites. That needs to be evaluated. We've done a ton of that. There are still some left to do. Ongoing roofing replacement, carpet replacement, the library at Casa. I mean, you know, we did the library at Peddle Mountain High School already. These are just off the top of my head, some of the improvements that I would have liked to have seen happen. Locker room interior renovations at Casa, lighting upgrades, and of course, we need to finish paint at Peddle Mountain High School as well. But these are some of the things I wanted to get on a list just as a reminder of, these are some of the projects that are left dangling. We still have some high school bond money left. It's not going to be enough to do all of this stuff. I didn't do the bigger, sexier projects, like build second gyms, build a performance hall. Many of these things could be done with some of the money we have left. Maybe not all, but many of them could. Not the elementary, because the elementary, we're pretty much out of money.
Because, Chris, I mean, the elementary is pretty much out of money with these projects that are currently going on. Secondary, there's
There's still so many left.
Million, I mean.
You know, we have to finish Kenilworth and Casa. Casa, for example, there are some spaces that, I mean, we're evaluating an 88,000 or change order right now. So, you know, for me to say, here's how much we have left, we have to close out the current projects. We have many big projects in summer. Once we have closed those out, we'll have a better idea how much money we have left. But it's in the 12 to 15 million category. We'll have a better idea once we finish closing them out.
Which will go very quickly, these projects.
Absolutely. It's not going to build a lot of new buildings, but it could do, it could make a dent on some of these. On some of these, it's about prioritizing some of the needs. Anyway, so, sorry, Tim, I didn't want to take over your presentation, but I wanted to just kind of highlight some of these. I wanted to get them in writing so they didn't get lost in the transition. So I tried to spend some time and kind of trying to get on paper based on what I've seen and what I've heard from staff, emails and input.
Very good. Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. If you're in the room and you want to fill something out, there are forums back there. If you're on Zoom, please put your first and last name and the topic you wish to talk about in the chat. While we're waiting for that, I will read the rules. Under Government Code Section 54954, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of 20 minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies and procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district has a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board evaluates public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value the public's input. So I don't have any, no, Dave, anybody? Okay. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
So. Sorry. I would like to make, I'd like to make a recommendation here that we pull Item 11.3.2, Approval Service Agreement with Math Annex to provide a mathematics benchmark assessment for the 2023-24 school year. So I want to give just a little bit of background about the thinking here. So I've been thinking a lot about this item over the past few days. We've been hearing a lot from math departments, math teachers. I was able to speak with Tony and Josh this afternoon, well, it's more today, to discuss sort of what is an eloquent path forward with common assessments. Board Goal 1, Objective 2, our district will implement common math assessments TK through 11, allowing time for professional development, in addition, being exploring culturally relevant ELA assessments. So we know that that's a board goal and an objective. And so I want to just kind of frame that in the why, why we, you know, we as a governance team put that out there and said, this is something that we really want, and how do we move, how do we move that ball forward? So, and in my mind, and I know when we put this together, this is absolutely an issue of academic equity. This objective is about academic equity. All the feedback that I've heard so far from math teachers, math departments, has been very, very, it's been all positive. I haven't heard anything negative yet about the general concept of common assessments and the ability to use common assessments to support students. That's clear. I think we're, I don't have, I've not heard from anybody who's not on board with that. We have heard from multiple secondary math teachers and math departments that there are concerns about the process and the provider, the math, so the process of getting to where we're at right now and the provider. So in our rush to implement, there were definitely some missteps in the process. And while I'll say that there was never an intent to subvert the shared decision-making process, there was really, it was really more about a desire to, or lighting a fire, because we know that kids can't wait and that we need to move the needle on our math scores as quickly as possible. As been mentioned before, our two high schools use two different curriculum, two different curricula. And over the past, the course of the past decade, we've seen our math scores fairly flat, the data that was shown at the last, the last meeting. In reviewing this data, also, what's really concerning is this consistent wide opportunity gap between our subgroup of students. So we're seeing some students doing well and some consistently doing not as well. And so we have to figure out a way to help to move that forward. And I know that our math teachers, our math departments, everyone wants the same. We all want that. So with that said, out of respect for our math teachers and math departments, and the feedback that we've gotten, as well as a desire to work collaboratively, assume best intention, as it relates to meeting the needs of students, I want to propose the following, so that we pull this, we pull this item tonight, and then we bring back, at our next meeting, in our July Board Meeting, we bring back a new Math Annex contract for the board's consideration. We revise it to continue to cover Arcade Schools. At the meeting on Tuesday, we heard that, you know, by the end of this year, we had 100% of our, I think it was about 85 teachers who were polled, felt like it was very useful and very, it was a good process at the elementary, because we've, I mean, fact of the matter is, that's where we put all of our focus. If I could go back in time, I would say, let's start either with elementary or secondary. But again, it was that rush to sort of make it happen. We'd be bit off more than we can chew. And so anyway, that's just what happened. It's regrettable, but that's where we're at. That was where, elementary was where the process was fully supported by ed services, and the feedback's been very positive amongst our teachers. And when I say RKAs, I'm talking about our elementary schools, Paks and Cherry Valley, the K8 schools. We'll also bring, what I'd like to do is also bring back sort of some criteria for the board to take a look at for secondary common assessments, because, again, I haven't heard any issue with common assessments. It's just more the process and the vendor. We know that time is of the essence, so we also want to bring a proposed timetable, kind of set that criteria, how we work together to either, in my mind, either A, we co-create some math assessments that we're, when we're going to put in, when we're going to put them in place, or B, we find a provider that secondary common math assessments are implemented, so that the secondary common math assessments are implemented for the 24-25 school year. I mean, if we can make them happen sooner, then wonderful. That's even better. But that gives the secondary math departments and the math committee time to work together through a shared decision-making model, a process, and find a common assessment that meets the board's criteria that we'll bring in July, is actionable and user-friendly to the majority of the committee. So in addition to building or selecting a provider for common assessments next year, secondary math committee is going to continue, will be clear that they're going to continue to work on professional development, on CASP, aligning standards to make sure all PCS students are receiving similar content, even though you have different curricula. We want to make sure those standards are aligned, that we've got, we're teaching especially those key standards to all students, lesson studies, professional learning networks, and re-engagement. Using research-based common assessments is not a novel idea. It's what we talked about two years ago when we created these goals. In fact, it's not, it's not about the assessments. It's not about, it's not about the assessments in and of themselves, and it's certainly not about using these common assessments as a way to determine good or bad teachers. That's not what it's about. It's about using the correlated data as a tool, giving teachers time to collaborate, learn from one another, and hone their practice. It should be about learning. It should be outgrowing. It should be helping us to move the needle on our scores. As I've said all along, I'm not for, I'm not for or against any provider. I have no connection with Math Annex. We did, we hired Josh two years ago, in part, in part, to help us with this board goal, board goal and objective, to set up research-based common assessments to help us as a district begin to move the needle on our math scores for all students. So we want to see that continue, and we hear the feedback. We want to be respectful, because we need to be, we need to be, all be rowing in the same direction. So, lastly, just want to say, you know, say this while we've got everyone here. I would ask of our secondary math teachers, our math departments, our math committee, to engage in a true, in a shared decision-making model, where questions, concerns are brought to the committee and/or Educational Services Department, and an accordion process is used to discuss concerns and bring them back to the committee. Having dialogue over public comment is not ideal in a board meeting. It's much more challenging to respond to concerns, engage in any real process. And so the process needs to go back into the math committee. That's where it should be. That's where it needs to live, the conversations, the accordion process, and then bringing a recommendation. And so, again, there were certainly some missteps, and we want to address those early on next year. And with the understanding that common assessments are happening, it's just, we're going to give some grace and give some time to make sure that everyone is feeling part of the decision, and where the majority of the committee can select what they want to use. So, again, restate what I said at the very beginning, want to make a recommendation that we pull 11.3.2 Approval Service Agreement with Math Annex to provide a mathematics benchmark assessment for the 23-24 school year. We bring back a revised one in July.
Can I get a motion for that? To revise the agenda? I, go ahead.
I'll move to poll item or table item 11.3.2 to the July Board Meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Can we have a discussion?
Oh, sure.
So, thank you, Matthew. I really appreciate that. And I want to just emphasize, and I think this is in line with what you were just talking about. I want to first acknowledge, you know, the effort that has been put into getting us here with Math Annex, and more importantly, with common assessment in the first place. To Tony and to our teachers who wrote and came to express their concerns, and I thank you for that. We need to hear that. And so I really appreciate that. I think, you know, kind of the underlying goals, another way to think about the goals that you just mentioned, Matthew, in my opinion, is, you know, the status quo and what we experienced last year can't be repeated. And that is on both sides, which means we can't have the experience with Math Annex that we had last year. Yep, go for it. It has to be something different. At the same time, we can't have flat gains on math scores and persistent gaps in those achievements. And we all agree with that. And so, you know, I'm not an expert on assessment or on Math Annex or anything. And so, you know, when, over the last couple of meetings, I've always been pressed on process, because that's, that's all that I can, I'm going to lean on all you experts and the teachers here to tell us what is the best path forward, because you're the ones that are going to have to implement it. So, you know, what you described, Matthew, sounds like the right process. And so that's what I'm going to lean on. And if we, if we do end up, you know, sticking with Math Annex for secondaries, I want to hear about how it's going to be different. And I want to hear, you know, that there's support among our teachers and the secondary schools for that. And if it's not, then we're going to have to do something else. I do really appreciate that our teachers are offering an internal development of an assessments process. I got to say that I'm really worried about that, because I know your jobs are already full-time and doing, developing an assessment instrument and implementing. and doing, developing an assessment instrument and implementing it on top of your full-time job of teaching our students. It doesn't sound sustainable to me. And then, and I also acknowledge, I think it was what Josh said, for assessment, real, there is advantage to having a, a third party come in to take a look at things objectively. And so, you know, I'm, that's where I'm leaning, is we do need a third party to help us with this and to free up our teachers' time to, you know, focus on educating our children. But it has to be a different experience than what we got last year.
Correct.
And I also agree with Sheldon, I'm not a math teacher, I can't even do math. So I need, I need guidance from, from our math teachers and our math departments to let me know what's going to work for them. So I read all your emails, all the letters, I really appreciate them, they really opened my eyes because I really had no idea. And so I'm glad we are shelving it and letting secondary work on coming up with a viable common assessment.
I agree with my colleagues on, on all the, on everything. I, I, I think that we have a better process, definitely, from your advocacy, from, from all the letters we got, from the presentations. Josh, thank you for all your time for, you know, continually to try to tell us what's been going on and bringing in Math Annex to try to defend, explain, I should say, their program. You know, Megan Fontaine at our meeting the other day mentioned something about creating an assessment plan that would be district-wide. And I just, I think this might be part of what you could include in this so that we have some, you know, strategic idea or strategic plan on how to create the assessments, what to do with them, what to do with the data, just so that that's there, maybe, just an idea.
Thanks, Benny.
But I, this looks great.
Okay. All in favor of tabling Math Annex till the July meeting?
I actually have something to add, I don't know if you can see, my hand is raised.
Oh, sorry, Joanna, go for it.
Joining you guys at home, I have COVID, so. Oh, I just wanted to share my thoughts on this as well. I mean, I know that we heavily focus on the elementary schools when implementing this. But then when I was going back, I went back and looked at the equity study and was thinking about the discussions that we had about why we wanted to have common assessments. And you can see from the equity study that our most vulnerable schools were all of our elementary schools, with the exception of Grant. But, I mean, so I guess it makes sense that we were focusing on our most vulnerable, which I think is what we should do when we are making decisions and looking at data and our equity gaps. I am a little bit concerned as well because we know that teachers are overloaded, especially in the past three years, really exacerbated by the pandemic, asking them to take this on. And it is all throughout the LCAP, talking about math common assessments. How are we going to accelerate student success in math? I mean, it's all through the LCAP, also talking about placement and the secondary level and how the math common assessments can help us address those. So, yeah, those are just my thoughts on all of that as well.
Thanks, Joanna.
And just one last thing, Matthew, so what I'm hearing also in what's going to happen between now and July is, you know, that the elementary work with mathematics, you know, will, will probably continue.
Yes.
And, and so I just want to make sure that's.
Yes.
Among the things.
So in, so in July, we're going to bring forward a revised contract with Math Annex that includes our K8 schools, so our elementaries, Paks and Cherry Valley, the seven, eight Cherry Valley. It's been going well there. We know that that's, that's not, that hasn't been the issue, that's where the focus was. And then we spend part of next year figuring out how we move forward at the secondary using, using shared decision-making to come up the process and then also coming up with a, either creating the assessments, which Sheldon and Joanna both pointed out, I, I also share those concerns about doing that. We've done that before, we did that ten, I, I was part of that group that did it ten, ten, twelve years ago in this district. We piloted it, fizzled out because it's, it's hard to, it's just, it's just challenging. That was at the elementary, maybe it'll work at secondary, I, I don't know. I, maybe that's the, maybe that is the best route. I'm not prejudging, but it was a challenge, it was a challenge ten or twelve years ago for us at the elementary. Or we find another vendor that everyone feels good about, or the, or, I don't know. But we're going to be, we're going to give some time and some clear deadlines and timelines because it's got the common assessment, no one's, no one is arguing against common assessments. It was just the process and the timeline. So the elementary will continue, we'll bring that contract at the July meeting for them, and then we'll figure out a way to move forward the second, at the secondary level with getting everybody together in the same room and, and.
Yeah.
Okay, so. All those in favor of tabling the Math Annex contract till July? Please say aye.
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 It's been a while since I've done this. Thank you. Okay, now. Approval, adoption and approval of the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, report on activities and correspondence of school board members, since we just had a board meeting two days ago. I haven't heard from anyone, so I think we can move on from there. Next is comments from the public on consent agenda items. Again, same rules apply. There's nobody out there, but if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to comment, please put first and last name and your topic in the chat and we'll give about a minute or so. And she's not. Okay, let's, now we can close it. Let's close the chat and move on to approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Comments, questions? Oh, sorry.
I'm really happy to see the least renewal for Kenny's.
Keep it as low as possible.
Yes, yes, they're pretty wonderful. So, no comments, no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving along. Action items. So now we're at comments from the public on action items, same rules apply. If you, Sandra or anybody else, if you wish to make a comment on any of the action items, please put first and last name in the chat and which action item you would like to comment on. Dave? Nada? Okay, we'll close the chat. And we're on to the first action item, which has to do with board meeting planning.
Did this on Tuesday?
I know.
I moved to stay, yes, all right, I moved to stay in hybrid format for the next month.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item is approval of the contract for the chief for CBO for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I move to approve the contract for the CBO for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any comments? Questions? All in favor?
Happy to have it.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Business Services, approval of adopted budget for Pedalumis Elementary and Joint Union High School District for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, fiscal year.
I move to approve the adopted budget for the Pedalumis Elementary and Pedalumis Union High School District for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
I'll second.
Before you, and before you make a motion, I'd like to just answer a question that was raised at the last meeting.
Okay.
So we had talked about the minimum classroom expense. Yes. And you had asked a question. I told you I'd get back to you.
Great, you already have an answer.
Well, I have, I have more information. So we did some research and one of the things that we heard from our county office of education is that there are numerous districts in both Sonoma County and across the state that have, have in the past not had this as a challenge and who are experiencing this as a challenge. And I suspect it's for many of the reasons that I outlined in my board report. They expressed their appreciation for the fact that we have identified this so early and that we are already working on looking at our account codes, trying to find solutions, you know. So anyway, just for you to know, the, the county office is seeing it because they're submitting their budgets, our budget being as large and as complicated as it is, of course, we're submitting ours later than most, which we typically do. So I just want to let you know that A, we're not alone. B, that we're all over it and probably mo- more than most, because we're looking at it and we're paying attention. And then the other thing is, they said that a couple of things that we can also do is, or what's, what makes us more eligible for waivers are, do we have K, K six? Are we below a twenty-eight to one staffing ratio, which we are? And then we'll look at our nine, our seven, eight staffing ratio and our nine, twelve, which I believe will, will be better below those. And they also said that they believe that the superintendent of schools, they're the ones who determine whether they're, they'll approve a waiver. And they feel very confident that the superintendent for this county has no, will be approving waivers.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let, at least for twenty-two, twenty-three.
When's the deadline for putting in waivers, for requesting a waiver? Is there a deadline?
Well, you know, there's the, you know, probably for the closing, so this will be part of an audited actuals.
Okay.
So, you know, the, the CEA, CEB, which is part of this, part of this, CEA being estimated actuals, which is two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and the CEB is for the budget year of twenty-three, twenty-four. When, as they're closing, they'll be doing an audit of actuals. And then as part of that, the CEA will be saying, okay, here's how you closed, did you meet it or not? So this is just an estimate of whether they believe we're going to meet it or not. And then the closing process will say, you met it or you didn't. And that's when a waiver will need to be requested. And so through the closing process, I've given them, them being the consultants advice on things that, that can be looked at, things that can be recoded, rethought. I'll also be looking at some staffing ratios, making sure we're in compliance, so I'll be kind of advising a bit. I've offered to Matthew that I'm happy to kind of be on the sidelines, assisting the consultants as they're closing. And of course, assisting Amanda as needed slash requested. So anyway, I just wanted to answer your question as far as that particular piece went.
Did they mention anything about consequences? You know, does it affect our, our rating or?
Typically, there are financial penalties, so there's a whole piece of documentation on this. I can certainly, you know, provide more information, or you can certainly ask the new chief business official
Yeah.
to provide that information at the closing process.
You don't have to look that up. Thanks.
So anyway, but I did want to answer the question that you asked.
Thank you.
With the positive certification, by the way.
Resolution two, 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 three, just three. Determining the use of education protection account funds for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for Pedalumis Elementary School District and Pen Grove Charter School.
I'll move to approve.
Second. And these are all perfunctory, we do these each year, and this all relates to back during the recession when Governor Brown passed Prop thirty that contemplated additional revenue sources, including, you know, the additional half cent or half a percent sales tax, et cetera. And as part of that solution to closing that budget gap and helping to fund schools, or to continue to fund schools at a certain level, even though they cut us dramatically at that time, we had to account for how we were spending those funds. And so we basically report each year that Prop thirty funds are used to support future salaries and benefits. Very perfunctory, but we annually do this for both the current year and the budget year.
Okay.
And so each one of these next resolutions is basically just talking about two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
For all of our organizations, the elementary and the charter and the secondary and the two charters.
Any comments or questions for Chris before we vote? You good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so resolution two, two, three dash three, four.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
So it's the same thing, right, Chris? All in favor?
Aye.
And then resolution two, two, three, two, 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 three dash three, five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution two, two, three dash three, six.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two, two, three dash three, seven.
Are we still on the EBA's?
Oh, no, we're not. We are not. We moved past to authorize designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents.
Move to approve resolution two, 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 three dash three, seven.
Second.
And that is, are they?
It's the CBO.
It's the CBO superintendent.
They're not even named.
It's not named.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
And then resolution two, 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 three dash three, eight, appointment of member and alternate to RISIC.
I move to approve the resolution.
Again, I think it's superintendent and CBR.
Yes. Is CBO or superintendent.
Yeah.
That order.
Okay, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to the good stuff, the LCAP. Twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four logo control and accountability plan.
There's any questions beyond what we shared at the public hearing?
No, I feel pretty good about it.
You feel, Tony, maybe just a quick reflection on the processes, especially if you felt you have good engagement from our community stakeholders?
I, I think we could always do better. I think, you know, one thing we, we reflected on was having more consistency with our parent community and community partners, and that's something that we'll really strive to focus next year on. And I think, you know, we had a lot of good attendance with our administration, some of, some of our teachers, but we, we, we realized we share that same data and process with them throughout our administrative meetings. So we really want to engage the community much more so, because this really should have a lot of voice from the community as well that helps guide what they see the needs are. So I think one big important shift will be just including more or advocating more for, for our community, especially those that represent students who are duplicated and, and part of this from justice.
Do you have any ideas about how to do that?
Well, I think one is to start early, to work with our administration, to reach out to the parents that we know through the, talk with the principals, through their PTA, through, you know, general parent meetings, back to school nights, any, any opportunity to reengage them, especially at school sites where we have a lot of students who are socially economically disadvantaged and English learners and Latinx community and, and even LGBTQI plus community as well to, to make sure we're as, you know, fully diverse as we can be, because it impacts all of our, all of our students. Because it impacts all of our, all of our students.
Do we have translation services?
We do at all of our LCAP.
And I also. I'm I really appreciate the engagement piece. Because I'm still noticing that like we're still seeing asterisks next to. Black student AP scores and there's no reason that in the year twenty twenty three, we still have less than ten black students taking AP. AP classes in our high schools. As well as, you know, there's like an NA next to the. Black percentage for A through G completion. So I mean, I don't know. Does that mean that we just don't have? There's less than ten black students who are A through G. Eligible. So it would just be great. I would love to see more diversity and then engagement from some of the black organizations. In our town and. Because I just feel like if those voices aren't in the room. Then they're just going to continue to be asterisks on these documents. So.
Absolutely.
No, I move to approve the twenty twenty one to twenty four LCAP plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And then we dropped the next one. So now we're on to. Comments from the public on discussion items. Same rules apply. Um, we will open the chat for about a minute. Please put your first and last name and what discussion item you wish to comment on.
There's no one here, Alan.
We are in the area of performance indicators. For PCS. LCAP for Mary Collins, Pax and Pen Grove.
So the the local performance indicators is just a self reflection tool that we require to submit. And include in our dashboard. So it's it's just addressing the the. California state priorities and how we think we're doing with them. Sometimes. It's just to carry on from where we what we had indicated in the previous years and. And some of them may adjust depending on on where we're at, but. It's just more of a really an opportunity for us to kind of self reflect on how we think we're doing in regards to our LCAP and some of the priorities that we have in place. But it is a good tool for us to kind of help us to kind of rethink. How we could do things better or where we're at and what we what we can focus on some of these other priorities that we're seeing that we may have. You know, over may have missed along the way as we're going through the process.
Questions or comments?
I just I appreciate it. It was very readable, very honest, I thought. And clear. So thank you. There were, of course, some things marked really low.
Tony, are these data? District wide or is it? I mean, are the are the charter schools in here and both districts?
So the the this reflects the the district as a whole, the indicators.
Everyone.
Yeah.
And then the charter schools put in their own LCAPs, right?
Charter schools do that. They don't do the SIPs as they do their own LCAP. We don't, they don't need to be board approved. There there's no statute for them to be. It's just more information for us to know. And 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 in all of them, they will include. An additional goal for for students with disabilities as required under differentiated assistance. As identified.
How long are we going to be under differentiated assistance? Do you know?
You know, if we show progress, I think. If we can show progress, I want to say I'm not too sure, but I think three years, then we should be able to exit out of it. And our goal really aligns with that. Making those incremental gains every year for the next three years so that by that third year. We'll be able to hopefully be out of it. But but at the same time, it also really allows us to. To really focus on that area that we know needs it and we we get that additional support from the county office. To really help us address that, the issues with our students with disabilities.
Comments or questions? Okay. We are on to future business. Anything?
Well, I know we spoke about last time and this is this is Chris Thomas's last board meeting. We've done some several celebrations, but just want to. Again, publicly thank Chris for all for his service to Pedalumis Schools. Yeah, we're going to miss you, Chris.
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
We are going to miss you a lot.
Appreciate the work keeping us in the positive certification all this time and through some amazingly challenging years. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, it did.
I love the color.
Fresh start for next year.
Well, I'm not doing it, so I don't. I think everybody's safe. If I was doing it. We're going to miss you a lot. Thank you for helping. Me, kind of a mathematical idiot, understand the budget. I really appreciate that.
Doesn't say brought back memories for you.
It's just, it's just, it's just. My husband was saying to me the other night, he says, I'm just so grateful that you decided. To enter first year because I'm so attached to him that. I've decided as a transition for the next several months, I'm going to come down so we can buy lots of elements of stuff. Give us a ten and then go to all my favorite schools and deliver a box of gifts. Stop into the district office to go fill the house and hi.
So you do have favorite schools?
So I mean, you know, because I I it's going to be really hard. So I'm just gonna like, let's wait. And and Sophie cries every time I go there. Just clearly, I've been keeping her. She's such a sweetheart. So anyway, that's my, that's my transition plan. You know, eventually you'll find, oh, I have a week. Seriously, that is planned. And so my husband's like, I understand. I said, so maybe we can write her by Sam. Deal a little basket with the box and don't let him send it. Yes, that's what that's mine. That's my transition. I think that's excellent. I'll keep Sophie in this. And to say hi to everybody. Yeah, and I love all the money principles. I mean, you really do. I it's breaking my heart to leave. So this is my plan. Bring a box of joy. It keeps up. So thank you all. Well, thank you.
Can help us run our campaigns for.
Personal tax and bond, exactly.
Absolutely. We can run them with them.
I know. Slow them down just a bit.
No, absolutely. I mean, you know, if people don't realize that. We get these connections with people and that's our part of the journey. I mean, I I actually do.
Me too.
I don't love the stress. The work I love and the people. You know, you just get these connections with people. And it's so funny, this past year with all these new principals. I mean, you know, Suamia and Melissa and.
We've got some good ones.
Jamie and Gina and even Carly and Ruth. Victor the dog. I mean, how can I not?
No, I know. He might like the. But Victor's had enough donuts, you can tell.
Yes. He can have exact.
I'm sure the kids. The kids probably feed him all the time. He's so sweet though.
Well, and Christina, I mean, I, you know, it's like, there's all these really. Amazing and Liza, I mean, you know. So it's kind of sad for me to like let these and they're all. I might pop in and, you know, give them all the toys.
Here's a donut.
Yeah, I'll look at your budget for you real quick. Yeah. Great.
That's great.
You guys have been a solid board. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your help. Me neither. I always learn something.
I still clear board meetings.
Yeah, you know, I don't know why we didn't put you in front of the kids. Because then everybody would have heard of. He was so. Julian? Oh, yeah.
I'm just so impressed with him.
Because he wants to go into finance.
He should. He was the only one who ever won the budget binder.
Yes, he did. He really ate it up. Oliver, I know we've had great student board members. I should adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.